Are you ready? It's five o'clock. At this time, I will call the Perry City Council work session for June the 17th, 2019 to order. We have a quarrel. Item three is items for review and discussion. Item three A is appearances. Three A one is a presentation relative to heritage and legacy parks. Mr. Howler, are you doing that?
Uh, that's my turn.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'm Scott Allen with Perry's Construction Group. We've put together the budgets for Heritage and Legacy Park. The project team with combined Kurt and Angela and Chad have really put in some time and tried to pare this down from the original design and really bring the best value that we thought we could from a budgeting standpoint for most of these parks for the city. So we'll start with Heritage Park. So Heritage Park is an 11 acre facility over there at the corner of Sandman and Airport Road, an amphitheater type design. Go ahead, Warren. So when this all started, I know that you guys got a design from a landscape architect in Atlanta, TSW. So the original phase one of this project came in at $858,483. So the phase one in this project, what you see here, it had all grass parking. We didn't have any kind of storm drainage or bioswells, is what they originally drew in, which we'll show you in the next slide. Basically, there was no asphalt or paving other than this drive-in and turnaround section down at the stage. The stage was also not included, and there was no further infrastructure at this point in phase one for the bathrooms or anything like that. There wasn't an electrical package. Basically, there was the oval sidewalks, there was some landscaping and the grass park. So then, from there, we, the project went to bid. So the design, bid documents had changed from just that phase one to more of an all-inclusive perspective. The bid that you received, so, was $1,579,910. Going through this with Angela and Chad and Burke Murph, we noticed that there was quite a bit of, we call them required improvements, that were going to be additional cost to the project on top of that bid number. So we valued those approximately $96,744. So your project cost from your previous bid would have been $1,676,654. The difference in the projects code between TSW's phase one and what was included in the projects code for your bid, original bid, was you had the tiered grass parking areas, but you, this time, you had all your paved parking area. You had a landscaping package, there was the shade sale by the stage, the infrastructure. It was much more all-inclusive in the bid. So that was the phase one, that was the difference between the phase one of the bid and the TSW phase one.
Next slide.
Yeah, we split one. So that $96,700 and some change of required elements of construction that you were going to see on top of that bid price was the, the parking areas were not designed in the way that emergency vehicles had correct access, which was going to be an issue and we were gonna, we would have had to address on top of that bid. Also, the, there was no fire hydrant by the stage areas, so we would have had some water supply. We had to recreate all the hydraulic and hydrologic calculations, so there was no geotechnical investigation or report. So there was also nothing in there for the running power to the site, and there still was not more, there was not infrastructure for future phases. So that was what's included in the required elements of construction. So with the project team and Burke Murph, so GWEs redesign, our budget for this project is $1,338,841. So that number includes all of those required elements of construction that we talked about before. So there's not a missing scope here like there was from the previous bid. So we've got the paved parking areas, which have been greatly reduced, but they also have the proper access for the emergency vehicles. We took out some paving along this drive, so that's a GA B drive with the turnaround by the stage. We've reduced the landscaping by about 50%, but there's still enough in there that it's going to look complete. The big thing was that the entire, the entire site and design and layout was shifted, so in order to protect these historical trees that we didn't want to have to bulldoze and take down. So those trees will remain intact. We also have a complete site utility package in here, so you're, all the stormwater runoff and you're going to have proper drainage in the site. Go to the next slide. This is kind of, some of these things I've already hit on, but in, in your first bid, so you had these bioswells, which are basically where the water drains into kind of a rocky, natural looking feature. And those were nice, but they were incredibly expensive. So those were removed, and we talked about the oak trees, site paving. The concrete sidewalks did increase a little bit, but that was just to shifting the site. We also had erosion control costs increased just because of the sheer size of the site. And then we had, we also eliminated that tiered parking area. So you've got a balanced site now, so as far as ratings concerned, so there's not going to be a bunch of dirt removal or infill, so.
Next slide.
Some of the things that are kind of a topic of discussion, and this is, if you guys have any questions at all, just feel free to jump in. We don't have to wait till we get further on. We suggested that we provide some deductive alternates come bid day, when we choose, if you choose to bid this. One of those deductive alternates will be the sail canopy and the footings, so, which will go over the stage, and this is somewhat of a rendition of what it should look like. So that, the cost for that sail canopy and those footings is estimated about $86,894. So also, the landscaping and irrigation that we have already pared down, if we were to choose not to do any of those, that has a value of about $90,000. We also suggested that we carry a reimbursable allowance for furniture fixtures and equipment, which would be all your trash cans and your benches or picnic tables of $25,000. And we would carry that amount, but it's reimbursable to you. So whatever is not spent, it goes right back to the city. So if we were to, if we were to take these, so if we were to decide not to do the sail canopy, the landscaping and irrigation, and if you just said you didn't want the furniture fixtures and equipment, let's not carry that allowance. So the value of those is $201,894 collectively, which has a total possible savings from the original bid to now of $539,707, which would bring us to a revised budget of $1,136,947.
Includes the canopy and all of them.
Well, so I'm, this right here would not include the canopy. So the original budget does include all of these costs that you see here, but if you were to decide to not do any of these, then that would put us here, and it would get rid of the landscaping irrigation, it would get rid of the sail canopy and furniture fixtures and equipment.
What was it, the full million what?
Yeah. So, one million thirty-eight.
See if there's any questions in that.
Sure.
So what questions would you have? I mean, they're offering some alternatives there. One of the concerns I have is I don't know what you would do is in fact you don't put the sail canopy and the footings in because pretty much every stage we have now has some type of covering. We found that that's necessary to make it functional, so.
There, there was some, some other discussion that we talked about that was outside of this shade sale, so to speak, which would be more of like a hard canopy. We got into some pretty serious discussion about what that does to acoustics and things of that nature, this being a design around an amphitheater. So it would be something to consider if we were to kind of start talking down that path.
So what questions do you have before we move on? Comments, questions?
Ooh, what a hell of a canopy, wouldn't open.
Yeah. Well, I can, I just want to say that's why they're, these are alternatives, and I think we need to make a decision on them. Now, landscaping and irrigation, I, you know, I don't know, you know, is that eliminating all the landscaping?
That would be eliminating everything for landscaping and irrigation. So we, like I said, we've already pared it down, so this is kind of a, I know it's kind of difficult to see here what we've got laid out, but Angela shaded area is what's irrigated. So before, in the original bid, all of that tiered parking was irrigated, I mean, there was a massive amount of irrigation there. So it has been pared down substantially, but the $90,000 number is to eliminate all of it.
So let me understand, you know, otherwise if, if we get the canopy, we can't have irrigation? Or if we get everything?
No, 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 sir. So we can play with these numbers whatever way you want. So if you want the shade canopy and you don't want the landscaping and irrigation, we can, we can, we can do it that way. If you want the landscaping and irrigation, don't want the shade, sail canopy, we can do it that way too. Also, if, if there is a way, different way that we wanted to find how we cover the stage, we can do that as well. So, I mean, this is to show us around about where we thought was an effective budget, but it's, it's not, it's a budget. It's not a hard number.
Mr. Warner, you have some thoughts on that, we can discuss, so.
No, not yet.
Not yet? All right. Anybody have any other comments related to this? Can I make the comment?
Yes, sir.
I'm Kurt. I just want to jump in here and add to Scott. So, you know, right now, we're looking at budget numbers. The important thing is try to get this thing on the street, get real, real bid numbers so we know exactly where we're at, and at that point, if it's too high, then y'all can make the decision to pull out what you want. I think right now, at this point, if you start doing that now, you may be very much disappointed on bid day where you could have afforded it.
Okay.
So it's better to go ahead and bid the full package, and then when we come back and deliver a guaranteed maximum price, then you guys can pull out or whatever you need to get within that budget.
Thanks for that explanation.
Let me back up, though. These projected costs are relatively close, aren't they? We're not going to have another deal about where you say it's a million three whatever and it comes in at $2,606,000.
No, our, our job is to present you a conservative budget, so on bid day, our goal is, is your GMP to come in under what we're showing you. If we don't do our job, if we show you a budget and it comes, the bid day it comes in over, we're not doing our job. So we want to, we want to give you, we want to give you a conservative budget that when we, this thing happens.
That's why I want to point that out, council members, because, and you should be thinking about it, because ultimately, I mean, I won't have it for you now, but fairly quickly it's going to be, you all have got X amount of dollars left to pay for this project. So if we go out with a bid, even with the alternatives, you know, okay, fine, I mean, that's a good idea, but, you know, at least from what I'm understanding, you all should be relatively close about the figures that we're looking at right here.
We're still going to err on the conservative side, because again, we don't, we're, we're as tight as we feel comfortable with the market and the pricing in the market now, but we're, our goal still is, is for the guaranteed maximum price on this overall project to be lower than what we're presenting to you.
Okay. He's, theoretically, what I hear you saying is you're giving us the potential high side, and you hope, and you hope to improve.
The conservative budget method is absolutely.
Also, these, what we'll do is we'll bid these two parks together. So a lot of the times when we do that, what we'll see is, we will see discounts provided by certain subcontractors to obtain both projects at the same time. So instead of one and then the other, a lot of times when you lump them together, there'll be a discount off that bottom line bid.
Now, when, when you bid this, will these breakouts be poking out in the bid?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
These potential things that we could pull?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll know exactly how much. That's what, we, we would present them on a bid form as a, as a deductive alternate. So when the, so for the shade canopy, it's pretty basic, is that most of those are just going to be one bidder, and that's the one thing they're bidding. So if they, the deductive alternate at that point would just be the cost of the canopy and the footings.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments on heritage before we move on? Thank you.
So Legacy Park, which is, and I keep messing this up, so you guys will have to correct me, or we call it the Sinclair Station, is that, is that what we're, we're determining that down there? So that's where, where this park will be. Go to the next slide. So, so TSW's phase one estimate, which we're not going to see the variation that we saw inherited from the phases, these will be a little bit more in line, so was $668,777. So in this, in their estimate, what was included is we, we had a, like a gravel, so to speak, crushed granite concessions area, kind of a picnic area. So there was an infinity edge reflection pool, so the water feature in the center right here. We had a concrete plaza, and we've got brick pavers to match the city of Perry standard, and the ADA parking space, and then we had granite memorial walls in here, as well as granite retaining walls. The bollards and stuff that are out there, they all will get pulled, or were going to get pulled out in this estimate. What was not in here was like proper drainage for the site. So there were some, some issues regarding the site utilities. So, go to the next one. So when this got bid out, the bid price came back at $1,285,556. That includes this required site improvements number, so the actual bid was $1,195,906, excuse me. And then we had some required site improvements here of $89,650, which add these two together and that gives you this number up here. The bid price included the infinity edge reflecting pool as well, so we had the complete landscaping pet package with the tree line oval lawn, there was lots of different grasses in there. We did still have the granite memorial walls, the crushed granite plaza, the ADA compliant parking space.
Help me understand that crushed granite plaza.
So the crushed granite is basically, Kurt?
It is, but it's just crushed granite.
I know what crushed granite is, but where is it? Show it to me.
It's a plaza?
Okay. So, so this space here, basically with the walkway, and then there was a picnic area set up there.
Women with high heel shoes or tennis shoes, they would have high heel shoes.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the greatest thing, but we, I'll show you in the next slide, is that crushed granite's gone away in our design.
Good.
So then we have had the landscaping irrigation, which we just talked about. So some of the required elements of construction that we found here, so was, there's a existing storm drain and structures through, right through the center of the, of the site. That needs to be pulled out and some of those, those fixtures removed, and then some other areas capped and filled. So we've got new storm piping that needs to go in, in lieu of that. A big one was the demolition of the existing Carroll Street curb, and I'll show you on the next slide what I'm talking about. So basically, the roadway's been paved over that existing curb, so it's, we're going to have some sheet flow issues with the water runoff if we keep it there after we do some grading here. So that road's going to need to be cut back 10 feet into the roadway, and then we're going to have to pour a new curb and gutter along Carroll Street, and then pour back the street. So, and then, once that curb is there, we'll have some backfill of dirt, otherwise we're not going to have a flat, so. So our GWEs redesign, so our budget number for, for here is $865,719. That's, includes the required site improvements. It's a $419,837 reduction from the previous bid. So some of the things included in, in here, so is we've got the reflection pool, so we're going to call it the water feature, because I have a couple of, I have some different options for cost savings there that we'll get to in a minute. We still have landscaping and irrigation package here, it's been significantly pared down. We've got an increase in the big brick pavers, so along here and here, so we still have the picnic area that we were talking about that was the crushed granite, it's now concrete. And then we still have the ADA compliant parking, and we've got electrical infrastructure in here as well. We go to the next one. So here again, we're showing what areas are sprinkled, so some of the other things that we did here is we actually reduced the site to under an acre. The reason we did that was to save on some of the permitting for, for our stormwater and.
Land service. Land service.
Land service, thank you. So we proposed some deductive alternates and allowances here as well, so the landscaping and irrigation, we valued at $44,000, so that we can provide us a deductive alternate if you so choose. We are going to have, recommend that we have an additive alternate if we decide that we want to pour back the concrete around the Sinclair Station. So right now, everything around the Sinclair Station will be emode and it'll go back as grass, but if that concrete, if we want the concrete to go back, we, we estimate it'll cost about $20,000 to go back. The reimbursable allowances, and again, like Kurt said, this is really for us to find what we want to do here. So we have $150,000 for the infinity edge reflecting pool, and that will get us to bid, and we'll cover the cost of like a gunite reflecting pool, I've got some pictures on the next slide. But we also have an option, if you don't want to do that, to go to what they call a pondless water feature, that would be about $70,000 cost. We also recommend we carry $35,000 for furniture fixtures and equipment. Even though it's a smaller site, because of the picnic area and stuff, we've got some additional picnic tables, which is why that costs a little higher than, than the Heritage Park. So if we were to not do any of the alternates or allowances, if you total them all together, then the value is $229,000. So, which combined with the original savings from the original bid is $648,837 worth savings from your previous bid. If, again, if we were not to do any of the alternates and allowances, that would bring our revised budget to $636,719 for Legacy Park. So this is kind of a, this is a picture of like a pondless water feature. It would actually be the same square footage as your reflection pool, it's like 617 square feet. What this is, is there's actually a sump pump under the rocks where the water would drain down into that sump and then be pumped back up to the top of the water feature and recirculate. Some of the benefits of this is you don't have any standing water, so I would assume there's probably some liability that you're, you're free of then, but it's just another option. This is somewhat of what this reflecting pool would look like. Again, it's, it's a gunite construction, it's different than the pictures that you probably saw in TSW's design, which was a solid granite construction that was almost the cost of this entire project, so, in and of itself. So, so that, that was not a viable option, but this, this is something much more affordable that we can do if you so choose.
Two, two questions.
Yes, sir.
Depth of the infinity pool or liability standpoint?
So the depth of the infinity pool, I think was a little bit over a foot. So, but again, in design phase, you know, we have the flexibility of designing that to the specifications that we'd like to see it as long as it were.
And the other thing, long-term maintenance, as far as, if you do a reflecting pool and the water's not moving, you're going to have to have some sort of chemical content in it, and.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be some day-to-day maintenance there, more so than.
Yes, sir. So the water will be moving, so that's the infinity edge that actually pours over the edge, but there, no doubt, will be some maintenance costs associated with that.
Looks to keep little Joe out of it.
Right now, mom and dad.
What about the rotten garden as well?
There, there's not any sort of fencing or anything like that around it.
It's falling in the water, but they cracked the head on the rock.
Definitely something to, to consider there, so, because right now, there isn't something that would have struck, you know, children or people climbing or crawling in either Do we have any questions on Legacy Park?
Questions, comments?
I have one. You said that there was a, I guess, a sewer line going on there.
There is, yes.
You're going to cap it off.
We're going to, we're going to remove the complete.
Okay. Because my thing is that, since the road is high, and I heard you said about putting a sump pump in there, the water, when it rains, the water going to come down into it, and you going to have something to catch the water, and I heard you said a sump pump, but relocate the water back.
Well, the sump pump is for the water feature, so, which is just recirculating the water in the water feature. So, but we're completely regrading, you know, this site, so after we pull that up, so the grading that we do combined with the site utilities that we're going to install will, will handle the stormwater.
Yeah, if you put new curb and gutter and all up on Carroll Street, that should catch most of the sheeting that's coming down and put it in there.
Yes, sir. And we can back up and, and if you, if you like, just try to do it on that one. So basically, all the way down to, am I correct?
You're correct.
So all the way down in here will be new curb and gutter down Carroll Street.
It looks like that'll. It looks like that'll... The sheeting's gonna be high a little. Clean water's gonna flow.
So the rainwater will flow, flow down this way down here, so then where's the other storm structure, Chad?
It's right at the corner of the tree, the bottom. But most of this water's gonna carry across, uh, it will carry across main that doesn't enter the, uh, storm water lot, it's there at the bottom, at the Sinclair Station. However, in the future, we have a future phase of Main Street coming out completely. With Main Street coming out, then the phase, the park will continue over into the second phase, and that storm water will, will venture through the second phase of the park. So just a reminder on Main Street.
I got a question about...
Yes, ma'am.
That, that, um, can you go back a page?
Can we go back a page, Chad?
Go back one more.
That's going, maybe going the wrong way.
Yeah, I think you're going.
That's it.
Okay.
Okay, um, looking at the infinity edge reflector pond...
Yes, ma'am, can you?
Uh-huh, and, um, pondless water feature option. Do you have any more that we can look at?
I don't have any more.
Those are the two, well, not necessarily today, but I'm, I'm just curious. I like both of them, but he did just give them.
Right, right. And like, I'm gonna kinda go back to kinda what Kurt was saying. So if, the goal right now is to get us to, to the bid portion of this, and if we carry this allowance as, as the hundred and fifty thousand, then that will allow us to define what we want this water feature to be, uh, from that point.
Absolutely. It'll buy us time to, to get the final product at this point, but it'll, though, it's gonna be a for everything else. And it is an allowance, so whatever, you know, we're carrying a hundred and fifty, it ends up, we put something there that costs sixty-eight, the remaining balance is obviously still back in the city's coffers.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
In your opinion, which one of the, of the pool, of the water situation?
I, in my opinion, I don't, I don't know if I could call one better than the other, they're just a different option. I know that's very lawyer, too. No offense to any lawyers. It's just, it's, it's just completely different. It's, uh, I don't think, again, one is any better than the other, it's just what, what look does the city want to have at the moment?
Well, I think you need, you should take in consideration of your other phases that are gonna go at this park and what kind of pool you wanna see there, if there is a pool there. So, you know, Memorial Walls and different things like that, it may win, but with the infinity edge reflector pool, I will give you my opinion. Then the other one may not, it's just depends on what you wanna see.
Well, doing another way, which one is safer?
Well...
Are they probably equally...
You won't, like you said, you, you won't drown in the, uh, in the pondless water feature, but you could sure fall off of it. So, and then vice versa the other way, I, I, it's, it's difficult to say. 'Cause there will be some, some heights in that pondless water feature, and it won't be astronomically high. So, but I, I would say it'd probably be three...
They're saying we're three foot?
Three foot is, enough for a kid to crawl on.
Other questions or comments?
Hey, but why did we move the granite memorial wall to Phase Two? They were incredibly expensive.
Really?
Really. So the, the granite memorial walls, I have to, to go back, let me see if I, I have... Granite memorial walls, I believe, were about forty-five thousand dollars, um, for the granite memorial walls. I might advertise they were having this budget or probably in the previous one. They were. I can check on that if you'd like to know the cost, so we'll get back to you.
Mr. Gilmore, the acting director, come on, what is, what is being asked of the...
Well, I think based on the presentation and the discussion, you ought to authorize Perrys to proceed going to bid under their current estimate with the alternatives listed as they presented. And when the bids come in, you can take a look at it and decide what it is that you want to do. I do think, at least as far as manager is concerned, I don't think there's any question, I think it needs to be the reflecting pond.
Yeah.
That was the whole basic premise of what we talked about this event, because, uh, you know, just like, you know, was mentioned, you know, Phase Two, it was probably not granite, but Phase Two is going to have the facings with the residents' names and the veteran, you know, and all that kinda stuff.
That's a very good point, that we need to think about the whole project rather than the...
And then if you wanna splash in feature, I'm sitting here thinking, Phase Two, you're making work of a splash, a splash in feature that pumps water out of a big, big engine that flows right back into the...
Yeah.
Do we have concurrence to authorize Perrys to move forward in getting the bids?
Yes.
Bring back to us.
Yes.
Yeah. Concurrence, Mr. Gilmore? Thank you. We sure appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this and saving us, uh, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, that's a, a nice savings.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3B is the Office of the City Manager, and the one is the Municipal Court Facility, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, Mayor Council, since we're talking about spending money, which we may or may not have. In your package, you have a memo from me recommending that you, from a concept or future planning standpoint, make a change. Originally, uh, there had, in your longer-range building plan, had talked about having Municipal Court relocate over into this build, or this room right here, and then some other modification, police moves over. Going back and, and reviewing that, and particularly based on what we've seen with the growth of Municipal Court and everything, I don't think that's going to work very well. The other problem with that, you may remember, that GMA and other community groups and everything like to keep the court function separate from the police function, or we went through that whole discussion and everything. So what we'd like to propose to you from a concept standpoint and everything would be to, uh, start, for future planning and everything, on a new facility for the Municipal Court itself located between City Hall and the Public Safety Village. That way it kinda stands alone and everything. The other alternative would be to include a municipal court in the, uh, new City Hall, you know, structure. But, uh, you know, I can see where there's gonna be some issues or problems with that, you know, just based on what we have with court coming in here, you know, right now.
Right.
You know, the court function not only getting larger, but it, it's, it's really its own unique animal. So you go to a number of other cities, you know, which is the size that we are, or we're going to be, and you'll see that they have separate facilities for Municipal Court. So I would like to recommend to you all that you okay that as a planning concept. It's not to make a solid commitment, there's no price with it, everybody with me on that? Just that, just that's the direction that you think would be appropriate to go.
Well, if you come down here on Wednesday afternoon, when they're having arraignments, you understand, is not adequate in any stretch of the imagination to handle the court cases that you gather, so I think we're...
Which, of course, was a problem over when it was in the, uh, Public Safety Village as well. But I think that, that, that problem's just gonna compound itself even more. The other big issue that we have, where as you may notice in my memo, is I'm concerned we're gonna get hit up pretty soon about we're not providing adequate facilities for attorneys to meet with their clients or prosecutors to meet with the defense attorney and client to negotiate, or, you know, hammer out whatever some of the cases are and all that type of stuff. Plus, the issue like, uh, space for judges. And, you know, I think all that type of stuff just kinda lends itself, I'd just be better to have its own facility designed for that, that type of growth in need.
Questions, Council?
I think we need to proceed, we'll be with you, just to make sure.
I think I'd like a better control center building.
If the flood doesn't present problems.
That could get expensive. Yeah, yes, I, you have to look at it, this is just a preliminary look and, what's possible.
But, you know, kinda like I'm saying, Mr. Hunt's points on that, we already own the land and the facilities for it, we already have a parking, you know, for it. A lot, a lot of other infrastructure stuff's already set.
The other option, if that wouldn't work, particularly if you're gonna hand this in to the place that's screwed.
Yes, that, that's right.
And we're talking about a single-story building, just...
Be all likelihood, yes.
Unless you have the square footage in the ground.
Right.
Concurrence to move forward with the planning phases of that, to look at it?
Yes.
Thank you. Gilmore, please move forward with that.
Councilmember?
Item B, 3B2 is a request for a hearing officer, Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you. Uh, council members, also in your packet is a memo from me for our personnel policy. When we have an employee who has had certain types of adverse action, they have a right to have a hearing. Uh, we have had that occur for our policy, council needs to appoint a hearing officer for that. Administration would recommend to you that we appoint Mr. Tom Richardson. You may remember we have used him in the past, he has a lot of experience on the hearings and particularly governmental processes.
Questions, Council?
I personally was not impressed in last time we had him. That's my own personal.
Any other thoughts?
I, I have no problem.
I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you, Mr. Tom, appreciate your comments. Mr. Gilmore, please move forward, I hear consensus with Mr. Hunt's concerns expressed. Item three, or B3 is bidding authorization?
Yes, uh, council members, in your packet is a recommendation from the administration that we proceed with the demolition of the structures on the new City Hall site. We have acquired the final parcel of that residential home. And we're proceeding it with two alternatives added there. Uh, the first alternative would be, um, for the AME church. Uh, the reason we're listing it as an alternative is I believe they'll probably be set based on last discussion with their construction program, but I wouldn't want us to be in a situation, but we get the bids and then it's difficult for the church to move out. You know, over this whole course, you all have indicated you wanted as much spot to work with, the church spot, and they have done a good job with it. I think probably by the time the bids come in, everything will be okay, but just like to have that as an alternative. The other alternative with that too would be the demolition of Police Services Building, also known as the old, uh, JC Building. You know, because of some concerns that have come up relative to mold over there, you may remember there was some talk about that. Obviously, that's my understanding that that structure's not used anymore, so I think we might as well just proceed with it.
Yeah, while we're doing it, let's go ahead and cut it down.
Uh, the, the resident who was in the home has, have an agreement and has relocated, so that's not an issue.
He is, has relocated then, Tom?
I believe so.
Good. Well, he agreed to the timeframe that was given, so it's, it's our understanding.
Good. That's good to hear. Any questions or concerns about moving forward with the bid authorization or removing all of that? We need to do it because it is quite a mess also. Everybody okay with that?
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson? And Mr. Gilmore, please move forward with that.
Okay.
Item 3B4 is follow-up relative to cooler usage and the coolers research.
Yes, council members, uh, we are not asking you to do anything with this, this is just, you know, as much as possible, when you request information, we provide it to you, we try to get it back to you for you to consider. You may remember there was some discussion about the use of, uh, participants being able to bring coolers, you know, into various events. Where it was left was you authorized it for some particular events at Heritage Park only. But you did ask to get some information from other competing communities, so to speak. So we provided that to you, and, uh, please take a look at that, and then we can get back, or if you wanna make some type of change. Until such time, uh, what you had said is the process is what will be operated with.
Item 3B5 is a discussion of implementation of the liquor excise tax, is that you or me, Mr. Gilmore?
Uh, that'll be me, at least first round. Uh, council members, you may remember that the administration had come to you and talked with you and advised you about the liquor excise tax. It was on our books, but we were not collecting it, and there were vendors that could participate in it, and you authorized us to proceed with that. Well, subsequent to that, uh, there's been some discussion, uh, with issues with that. So we would like to, the administration would like to, uh, recommend to you all, if you are in concurrence with it, is that we just hold off on the implementation of that tax until those, uh, concerns can be addressed. There were two items, and there may be some other, but two major items. The one, uh, and of course, this is the manager's perspective, so... But the major one, I think, is, is a real potential issue, is some of the businesses may not be able to get their software programs adjusted in order to collect an account for the tax. I don't think that's an issue, for example, with Longhorns or Red Lobster, because they're bigger corporations, they are used to, you know, so it's like a PM. Some of our other smaller businesses or more local type of businesses, they may have some software issues, and we don't wanna cause them any problems on that, so that's the first thing. The second thing is that there has some inquiries about, well, why is Perry doing this and no one else does that, so on and so forth. Well, that's false, that no one else does it, but in order to address some of those concerns, we'd like to go out and do a survey, you know, with our usual group, and go back and get confirmation for you. Uh, what I would anticipate is once we have a good idea with those type of things, then we'll be back with you to give you a recommended date to implement, uh, that will address the other various concerns.
So, question, we don't, like you said, with a smaller business, I guess it's not our responsibility to try to help them get the information they need till they can learn how to do it.
No, they, I think they're, I think the issue that I understood was that it's a timing factor, they can do it, but it's kinda like us upgrading our software here, sometimes it takes sixty days and like that, and we only gave them three weeks. We told them we're gonna start collecting on July first, and that kinda put them, you know, very tight. And so I, I don't think that, Mr., I think I understand what Mr. Gilmore's saying, is that we're not giving up on the excise tax, we're just trying to understand what the issues are, address those issues, and then move forward with it.
A lot of the smaller computer systems aren't set up for that, and you, they may have to go upgrade the system or something.
Are we gonna be able to get, I mean, you mentioned, they think that we own somebody doing that, are we gonna be able to let them know that we're not the only city doing this?
Yep, we are.
We will, after we do all the research, we'll go back to them and...
Or more particularly, we'll have the survey information comes back to you. You know, which says, okay, for example, there are fifteen cities that are in our basic category. Out of those fifteen cities, fourteen collect the tax.
Good.
See what I mean? For example, like Warner Robbins collects the tax and everything, but, uh, you know, we could say... we'll be back with you to give you a recommended date to implement that will address, you know, the various concerns.
So, question, we don't, like you said, with the smaller business, I guess it's not our responsibility to try to help them get the information they need, or they can allow to do it.
No, they, I think they're, I think the issue that I understood was that it's a timing factor. They can do it, but it's kind of like us upgrading our software here, sometimes it takes 60 days and like that. And we only gave them three weeks. We told them we're going to start collecting on July 1st, and that kind of put them, you know. And so I, I don't think that, I think I understand what Mr. Gilmore's saying is that we're not giving up on the excise tax, we're just trying to understand what the issues are, address those issues, and then move forward with it.
A lot of the smaller computer systems aren't set up for that, and you, they may have to go upgrade the system or something.
Are we going to be able to get, I mean, you mentioned, they think that we own somebody doing that, are we going to be able to let them know that we're not on the city doing this?
Yeah, we are.
We will, after we do all the research. We'll go back.
Or more particularly, we'll have the survey information comes back to you. You know, which says, okay, for example, there are 15 cities that are in our basic category. Out of those 15 cities, 14 collect the tax.
Good.
See what I mean? For example, like Warner Robins collects the tax and everything. But, you know, we could say, well, Warner Robins does it, but the thing is, is that Warner Robins is also bigger, see what I mean, that type of stuff. So that's why we want to have a kind of comparable one.
Yeah, we look at cities of our comparable size, if they do or do not do it, and so. What other questions do you have?
Well, I'm glad we're, we're going to be looking at it differently, because after I did a little research of my own, I realized it didn't affect for the small number of folks that we have here. And so I would appreciate it being put right there.
Concurrence on council to hold it up until further investigation?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Gilmore. This is where we want to go into executive session, as I understand it.
I would recommend it, yes.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, executive session on the item of real estate.
Go move.
All right, please raise your right hand. We will go into executive session, and we will pick up with item 3C after the executive session adjourned, and we review the cost for going through the em, emrin process to obtain properties. The emrin process is a judicial process, there are current fees and other fees that are associated with going through that. Those costs are going to be thirty-five, three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars, somewhere in that range, per parcel. If there is a building or a house on a big property, then you would have to go and you want to demolish it, then you would have to do an asbestos test, which would run typically once around fifteen hundred dollars. And if there's asbestos, it needs to be removed, it's about twenty-seven hundred dollars per building. And then the demolition cost of the building itself is running about seventy-five hundred dollars. So in total, you're looking at somewhere between 12 and 15,000 dollars to go through that process and remove a parcel. So just wanted to. And that's guaranteed title. And that's a guaranteed title.
Clean title, I suppose.
Yes, once we go through that process. It's about a six to eight-month process, as opposed to if you were going through a tax sale and getting a sheriff's deed, I think is what it's called. You have to, you essentially pay the taxes of, whatever it's owed, then you have to wait a year, and you run the op, the risk of someone coming back and paying the taxes and so forth. Once that year is done, you still don't have a clear title, you're going to have to go through an applied title process to actually get a clear title. So the interim process costs more, but it's more efficient. So just wanted to give you those costs and ask for your approval for the land bank to move forward with those properties that we discussed. Council, your thoughts of moving forward on the property that we discussed?
Is there a cheaper way? That, that's a lot of money to spend on a house you're going to tear down.
Well, in the end, there, there is a cheaper way going through the tax sale, but in the end, you've still got to pay, if you're going to tear the house down, you're still going to pay the, the asbestos removal and the demolition fee, so you just save you the three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars. Well, you still got to turn fees on the tax sale as well. And you still don't have a clear title. So that somewhere a little less than the three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars is, is the difference. And I think that's another way we're going to acquire them, so it's, it's going to cost that much. Plus, to clean up the light, I think it's just the cost of cleaning up light. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Do you have concurrence to move forward?
I think the concurrent, or suggesting the concurrence would be to use the interim process where you all talked about.
Exactly.
Where it's most beneficial for, for city ownership, or possibly some direct ownership that the land bank's aware of.
Right. Exactly.
And if, if they're not aware of that, then the land bank can go ahead and proceed, but just going to go through the break.
The normal process, rather than the cost. Well, I will pass that.
That's not correct.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was, I would move, if they make the land bank aware of that this Thursday, then hopefully. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Item four is council member item. Mr. Jackson, who's on the side of the room? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Price?
Yeah.
Mr. Key? Mr. Tom?
How are we coming on the key?
They are supposed to be putting in the widening of the shoulders. Remember, that was something you all said you wanted to have done. That's supposed to be done this week, and when they have that facing, they'll come and look at the file pressing.
Well, thank you. Any other items? Mr. Gilmore, any items?
No, sir.
I have one more for you. Okay. I'll play tennis on our tennis court Sunday. A new one.
Yes.
I didn't think I'd live long enough to play tennis.
How was it?
It was great.
Bird dance out there.
There's one. It's small, but it's like, I played it hour and a half in 93-degree weather. Ooh, that's dumb.
Maybe it was an illusion. Maybe that bird.
It was a heat wave. Mr. Smith, anything?
No, sir.
Item 3B, anything? Thank you. Item five is department head item. Start back with Chief Lynn. Anything from the police department, sir?
Yes, sir, one thing, it's in the form of a request from a nonprofit, was contacted, well, actually, you witnessed me being contacted on Friday night. Houston County, Ian Foss, his organization that does the Team Maids and a lot of other good things. This is a report on this event from last year, where they do the back-to-school bash, where they give backpacks and school supplies to Houston County children, and it's labeled up to all children. I don't know how many are from Perry. I do know that since the housing authority has been involved in this in the past, that all the kids that live in the Perry Housing Authority have been supplied with, with these things. They evolved, and now the Ms. Foss's organization is taking this over. And this, this is the 10th annual this year. So the request is for July 19th. They have, in years past, for the starting ceremony, City of Warner Robins has provided the stage for them. And then their stage is, is nine panels that have to be brought in by crews set up, and then they back down, apparently of a boyist process. Somebody somewhere told them that we have a portable stage, so the ask is to be able to use the portable stage for this county-wide event. It is being held in Warner Robins on July 19th, it's from nine noon at CB Watson Elementary Street. So that's the ask, and so I'm just the messenger. I may, if you have questions, I may be able to answer them. They, Ms. Foss says now that this is her first year of being the lead on it, and so she has changed his plan for next year. Instead of doing one central location, what they planned to do next year, she tells me is do one in Warner Robins, one central, one in Perry, simultaneously doing the same thing. So that's what I know, basically.
Chief, are you guys engaged in this activity from?
We haven't been engaged in this one because it's, it's been held in Warner Robins. Warner Robins Police Department's engaged in it. However, both police and fire, this dates in another big name, this organization does, which is called Team Maids. And I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it reaches all the eighth graders in Houston County, I think both public and private school. And where they come to location, they go through these different vignettes that are, you know, like car crashes, distracted driving, injuries, emergency room, there's stuff on teen pregnancy and STDs. It's just a whole, it's basically aimed at anything that is likely to keep you from graduating high school. And they like to hit them in the eighth grade, right before they go into high school, to give them exposure to all this stuff. All the law enforcement and fire agencies in Houston County, plus fire, police and fire participate that, with a long host of other, you know, groups that support that particularly. But that's, that's our experience. I'll give. Chief, do you have any other experience besides the Team Maids? With this one? That's it, the Team Maids.
Council, your thoughts?
I got a question. If they want to modernize stage, it will be a liability that we have to be enjoying if in case somebody fall off, fall off the stage.
If I may, I might be able to make this decision a little bit easier for y'all. The, the stage certainly is portable, but barely so, certainly not G dot spec. And I highly recommend taking that outside the city. My opinion. You know, taking it downtown and that type of stuff and unloading it's fine, but taking it up to Warner Robins would be a completely different thing and probably unsafe to do so.
How we code.
Right, it, it, this certainly does not.
Okay.
I got my own.
Sorry, you got your.
I'll go to you.
And what else, what other items would you have this evening?
That's all I have.
Thank you. If you would tell them sorry, it's not roadworthy.
I will take care of that. Yes, sir.
Chief, can I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
On Tucker, Sunday morning at 12:30 a.m., did y'all get a call about a car tearing up a person's property?
Mr. Hunt, I don't know, but I can check.
Check on it.
Okay. It, it didn't rise to the seriousness where they called me, tell me if I'm like that.
Well, it meant I called you then, but next morning I felt all the, the ex, all the names. But someone hit my neighbor's brick, metal box.
I'm sure we probably did get called on that.
He knocked, he knocked it down, went through that, went through a steel fence, went through that, went through a wooden fence, came back up on the highway, and I know it must have burst his oil container up under it, because oil for half a mile up the road, still there.
I will, I will let you know something tomorrow.
The owner of the property's got a lot of damage. I don't know what he called y'all.
I would hope he did. If he didn't, we can't do anything. But if he did, it sounds like we got trail problems.
He got oil trail, but I don't know how you trace the oil.
I think he came in today to report that. He came by my office and I moved, sent him over to the police department, so. Gentleman came in today to report a mailbox being renovated.
It's usually better if they tell us right away, you know, why the oil's still fresh. Thank you.
All right, Chief. Anything from Fire and Emergency Services, this evening?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Smith, anything from Public Works?
No, sir.
Mr. Palmer, anything from our communications?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Wood, anything additional tonight?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Worthington, anything?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Harden?
Um, yes, ma'am, council, I just wanted to give you all a brief update regarding feedback from our last Blue Truck Friday over the weekend. We had an estimated 4,000 in attendance, and I heard from both the business community and residents, what a great event it was, the new setup that, with Carroll Street, with the big big tables and the lights hanging down. I had someone personally approached me at Rotary today to say how much they liked it. We had businesses participate that haven't really, previously been on board for downtown events since I've been here, and they loved it, and the feedback's been amazing. So I just wanted to let you all know that. And it also wasn't just a citywide attendance event, countywide people came, but we hosted a prospect from Columbus. He drove all the way from Columbus to come. We had a developer out of Macon that came, and he brought his family out of Atlanta. They drove Friday night from Atlanta, drove 30 minutes past Macon to here. So I just wanted you all to know that, and thank you for supporting that event.
It was a great event. Now, the challenge is that's going to be placed upon you is replicating the weather in July. The weather was definitely perfect. I think that's got everybody. If there's nothing else to come before us, we will stand in judgment.